Break for meeting of the City Council Needles Public Utility Authority, Housing Authority, City of Needles will come to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
McCorkle?
Here.
Mayor Jurnigan?
Here.
Councilmember Poe?
Here.
Bell?
Here.
Long break.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments pertaining to the executive session items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Recession to the executive session. Executive session. Lena?
Yes. Conference with legal counsel regarding significant exposure to litigation. See with government code section five four nine five six point nine V one potential case. Thank you.
Break for meeting of the City Council Needles Public Utility Authority, Housing Authority, City of Needles will come to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
McCorkle?
Here.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Jurnigan?
Here.
Councilmember Poe?
Here.
Bell?
Here.
Long break.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Executive session report by city attorney.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So with respect to the item, conference with legal counsel regarding significant exposure to litigation, there is no reportable action.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The invocation. Thank you, Lord, for all of our civil servants. Thank you for their hard work and sacrifice. May you continually bless them. May you generously give to each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people in our city. Give the mayor, city leaders, staff, city council wisdom so they may solve problems distinguished between right and wrong. Bring order, stability, and prosperity to our community. Amen.
Motion for approval of the agenda.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Tonight we have no conflict of interest or mayor's spot.
We have to do the vote. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Ford?
Aye.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
And tonight we have no conflict of interest or correspondence. Introductions, we have Tim Tyrell, prior city councilperson, Sean Goodmanson, prior city councilperson. And a special welcome to Dan Alfonso and his wife from the Bullhead City. He is the current vice mayor and acting mayor till next week. We welcome you. Thanks for that.
Thank you very much.
City Attorney, parliamentary procedures.
Yes, thank you. The mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak unless not first been recognized by the chair. All questions or remarks should be addressed to the chair. The council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon anyone's subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. Thank you.
As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the NPUA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section two dash eighteen. And then this to the California Government Code section five four nine five oh prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Yeah.
Good evening, City Council. Jared Johnson, thirteen twenty, Santa Fe Circle. I was gonna bring up a issue with a sign, but Patrick's already got it handled, so that's good. But I did like this, I'd like the pictures I saw with our new equipment being used by our employees, the Bobcat that we purchased with Trax. That is an amazing piece of equipment, and I'm glad to see that it's being used. If that is continually used, then we don't have to use private sector four to eight thousand dollars a job. That's gonna pay itself off real quick. And the amount of attachments you can get for it, the amount of equipment and work you can do with that for every sector throughout the city. The more we invest in our employees through new equipment to help them do their job, but also the experience in running that equipment. If every single employee can rotate their butt through that seat, pulling levers and hitting levers, pulling things, they get better at it. You only get better at it the more time you're in that seat. So if everybody rotates through that thing and does their job and get new attachments and they all learn on it, the better our city becomes, the better our employees are, the more well-rounded they are. That's true with anything. The thing I hate the most is we get a new piece of equipment that's brand new, but it sat in Sacramento for two and a half years before we got it. So lawn ornaments are great, but I love to see it moving. I love to see them getting experience. And there's a lot of things that they can do with that, so that is something that I like to see. The investment, not only in time, but in equipment for the city. It is a lot of money upfront, but that piece of equipment is small and it can do a lot because I have mowed so many miles of the forty with it. I have drilled so many holes to put fence posts in. The mulchers, the mowers, I mean, it's relentless how many, how much that equipment can do and how powerful it is. When they know their limitations of their equipment, and you have a person that has a Class A license, something happens. Boom, that dump truck's moving with a trailer and that equipment's loaded up with all the attachments or two pieces of equipment, and they can go straight to a job, straight to an emergency, straight to any project, and start working right away. It's amazing when they know what they can do, and when you have employees who are familiar with their equipment, what they can do. And it only better the city. Thank you.
If not public hearing is closed. Presentation. We have an update on the favor of Commerce Visitor Center by Ms. Hayden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council, city leadership. Kansas is gonna try to play a video that gives you a quick year.
Video first. Okay.
Sure.
And I think somebody just came in, so let me.
Sure.
Unfortunately, late this afternoon, we violated some copyrights, so there will be no music. But this is a brief recap of what happens at your visitor center and chamber of commerce.
Let me make sure I'm sharing it. I'm sorry.
Well, what we can show, because you know the mayor's office is right across the street. That's what I thought.
I don't think I can.
No worries. Then we can go right to my report. So as you can see, we cut ribbons, we get in the newspaper to support economic development. On any given day, we've reestablished our social media footprint. We take a lot of pictures. From that, we've taken on the Trailblazer signs. Thanks to Supervisor Rose's very generous donation. We supported State of the City. We had our annual golf tournament. We support local restaurants. We have a little fun at work. We opened up some dispensaries. We promote our businesses in town. Billit had coffee for veterans this year. We attended the resource fair for the county. We played golf. Some folks we know in town. And we take pictures, a lot of pictures. We host Good Morning Needles once a month for the business community or anyone else who wants to stop. So I can get my true report out, if that's okay, Canvas. Let me go to my slides. Okay, so from the best we could tell, we had been physically been here about a year ago. Carrie Brzezinski, the president of the Board Directors for Needles Chamber was here and gave her report.
So it's known.
Sure. So for those that don't know, we are the Visitor Center. We're located at the El Garcis. We have an average of one to seven visitors based on peak seasonal influx. We proudly welcome visitors from across the globe. We've had almost every, oh, almost every, all of our fifty states, as well as France, Germany, Hungary, Vietnam, Switzerland, lots of folks come. You have to remember that we're the first point of contact. We provide maps, chamber business members information and details, as well as support the local economy. We are the first stop for Amtrak, Social Security, DMV, car washes, whatever you can think of, our community calls us and asks. And they're our client because the City of Needles is, therefore we have no trouble directing them. So as part of the visitors program, we have a pilot program as part of the Route sixty-six initiative that over the next few weeks will be approaching, I didn't need to walk away, local businesses to promote the Route sixty-six anniversary coming. That'll be this time next year. So if you are a business owner or would like one, come see us at the chamber, call us, we'll get it to you. We want to continue our footprint on the Route sixty-six anniversary. Repetitive chamber. Okay, in addition, we talked a little bit about the Trailblazer program that was a gift generous donation from Supervisor Rose's office. So starting July first, we will renew that program selling for business owners as well as having some sponsors for historic place cards. We already have one sponsor that will buy the sign for the El Garcis Hotel anonymously. So whenever there's a space, we could use the historic markers. And with that, one Needles Chamber of Commerce business that is in good standing is gonna get a free sign for the Trailblazer sign. Tonight, we're gonna announce it.
So would you?
You know.
And then they have to get a pick one.
Oh, no, no, that's easy.
So you wanna go? Just one, very little tiny. Doesn't have no nails. Okay, thank you very much, Kathy. Little dog is hornyish today.
The winner is.
And the winner, and the winner is Pirates Cove. We will take care of them to get the sign. So on the other side of who we are, we are the, we are the Chamber of Commerce. So in one year, we welcome nine new businesses and cut their ribbon and continue to support their, the business community through Good Morning Needles or our annual golf tournament and any other thing that we get invited to. So we work hand in hand with the city, share the vision of growth. We celebrate huge milestones together. Last year, we had the privilege of hosting the State of the City that created a little buzz as well as an open market night. It's my understanding we had one of the largest attendants for that event. We support the Fall Festival, the Fun Fair, Run for the Walk, Run for the Wall, pardon me, the Veterans Breakfast. And we are the ongoing owner of the flags that surround the park and Broadway on every federal holiday. Part of our game, we get up and come over and do that. So in case anyone didn't know, it's Tina McGee Scott and I run both the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, and we're here to support you.
Questions?
Finally, what hours is the Visitor Center open?
The Visitor Center is currently open nine to two, and I don't know, there was a slide about a pilot program, and I apologize.
That was it.
Oh, it's there? Did I skip it?
And that's Tuesday through Saturday?
Tuesday through Saturday, nine to two. We have on the books and are working on all the pieces to pilot a program nine to five for two weeks, tentatively the last week of August through September, which would include Labor Day, to track the volume of visitors to present back to the city if we merit the cost to be a Visitor Center to those hours full time. We're aware there's an interest, and we would like to see if there is. There are days where lots of folks come and then the. But I think doing it through Labor Day will get that, those two weeks will still have an influx of visitors.
Do you guys have anything else planned, events for the city, for the chamber?
So we are gonna continue with our Good Morning Needles, which is the once a month. We are continuing to reach out. The Kushon sixty-six and Smash Burger will be having a grand opening, and we're working with them to see if we can start a cannabis networking group where they could, I understand that it's very proprietary, but they are members of the community and businesses in the community, and that philanthropic spirit should be shared. So we'll do State of the City again if we're asked, which is a gorgeous thing, and we'd like to expand it a little bit more. We did last year. The weather was prohibitive to be outside, but we like to have a true market night. We talked about movies in the park for the community. Do you have anything, please? I'm open to it.
Yes, what is, what day of the month is the Good Morning?
It's usually the third Thursday.
Thank you.
And it's at the Chamber office. Thank you. Thank you all for the opportunity. Have a great meeting.
Public hearing. Adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Needles, California, establishing a revised schedule of certain fees and charges for city services. City managers before.
Yes, real quick, before I start, so there's a new door over there. So in the event of emergency, we're all gonna screw it up that way. There's a door over there and there's a door in the back, so just for our own safety, this is a new surrounding. So it's important that we're all aware, this door is now gone, and so don't try and run that way. You might, out of habit. Let's run the other way. All right, that being said, the item on the front of you is the fee and service charge update. So state law, Prop two eighteen specifically requires that we can't charge more than what a service costs to provide. And then city code chapter eight requires that we have an annual review and adjustment of the fees to protect the general fund and ensure that we're not subsidizing private costs. And so what we're proposing, working with our finance, interim finance directors, and a six percent increase in fees to reflect the two twenty twenty-five labor material costs. And as you all recall, in this room in twenty twenty, October, it's quite some time ago, we did adopt the twenty twenty-three E study that updated the fully burdened hourly rate. And so that exhibit is attached. So we did round the nearest dollar for administrative ease. And so some of the fees that are being adjusted are site plan review, for instance, there'll be a seventy-five dollar charge. A CUP, so it goes, so we step back, the site plan review will go from twelve hundred to thirteen hundred. A CUP for non-cannabis will be twenty, it was twenty-six hundred, now it's twenty-eight hundred. Ten minute track map, thirty-nine hundred to forty-one hundred. And so these are just some of the examples. Some of the change, no changes that occurred with the recreation program. There'll be no changes to the recreation program at this time because it's currently ongoing. Cannabis deposit-based fees will not have any increases, and then capacity fees calculation methods will not change. We have removed some of the police department fees that got missed last time around. And so our interim finance director, you know, false alarms, DUI responses, report copies, those are no longer, those are no longer services that the city itself provides. Those are provided by the San Diego County Sheriff's Department. They now handle those services. We have removed those. So some of the risks of not adopting, falling out of compliance with Prop two eighteen in the city code, general fund impact for under-recovery, reducing capacity to funding permitting inspections and plan checks, and then delaying development project timelines due to staffing resources shortfalls. So this does align with the council goals. It does create public safety, economic development, and fiscal sustainability, which is a priority for the City of Needles. And so we are recommending that you adopt this resolution. It does maintain legal compliance, ensures fair cost recovery, prevents taxpayers for subsidizing of private users, and keeps city operation transparent, stable, and sustainable. I do want to point out that there are two sides of your equation. There's the X and the Y. Right now, we're talking about the X. The X is gonna go up by six percent to meet the cost requirements that are, that are needed to be able to be compliant with the code. But the Y is something that in terms of the hours of time it takes for these, for these jobs or tasks to take place. So in a couple of years, we have become more efficient, and so there is a way to lower that Y scenario. And so we're gonna work with the finance department to put together a cost of service study to be able to work on both sides of the equation so that in the future, we can find ways that we have reduced the cost and be able to reduce the cost for the residents of this community by implementing a cost of service study that will show that we have gotten more efficient or haven't gotten more efficient. But we'll have a third party coming together to be able to show that for us. So with that, I do have our interim finance director here, Jill. If you have any questions of her or myself, we recommend approval of this resolution and move forward with this six percent increase in fees.
Any questions, Madam?
Why, why do we need to do this?
So we had to do this to ensure that we are not subsidizing that the grandmas and grandparents of this community, those folks that are low income are not subsidizing the folks that are creating or that are benefiting from the development here in our community. If someone is going to build a home, they ought to pay with the cost of service that is provided to them. And in return, they get a benefit of having a new home that brings value. Now, the folks, the residents of this community that are subsidizing those folks in the event where the fees aren't increased, the mom and pops and uncles and cousins are subsidizing that individual, that private developer. So we need to avoid that from, from subsidy occurring.
We're trying to be pro-building, trying to get more things. We're not building homes, so why would we increase the rates right now?
So we are, there are, there, well, it is occurring. People do come in daily for building permits. They, so building is occurring, subdivisions might not be, but individuals are building individual homes. The building permits range from electrical permits, you got plumbing permits, those aren't being raised. Those are some of the examples that aren't being raised because it meets the current cost. We believe the current cost meets that six percent increase. But the, the folks that are building won't be prohibited by a six percent increase. I mean, as I mentioned, some of the examples of these increase, if you've got, if you're going from twelve forty-eight to thirteen twenty-three for a site plan review, it's a seventy-five dollar charge, your electrical bill is gonna cost more than that. And so to see that increase is minimal. And on the flip side, if you do get entitled and you do get your business built, or excuse me, you do get it entitled by the city and you want to come to the city for some sort of developer subsidy or incentive, the City of Needles does have a economic development fund that you can contribute towards those building permit fees. So in the end, it will lower some of those costs, but it does have to meet the criteria for, for the various instances that are taking place. So for instance, if someone wants to repaint their business, then they can go ahead and utilize the economic development fund. As long as they pay half of it, they can get half of it back. If somebody wants to build multiple homes, they can utilize the economic development fund to pay for the building permits. And so in the end, if there is gonna be mass development occurring, they will be able to utilize the economic development fund to help cover those costs. But those are all, that's all funding that came from cannabis and not from the moms and pops and uncles or the low-income folks of our community that are subsidizing that builder.
Any further questions or comments?
I, I looked over it extensively. I was really glad that we, it seems very balanced, and I was really glad that our recreation programs, you know, remained, you know, unchanged in that, especially for the, you know, the services that our citizens, you know, are in need of.
I, I just wanted to say that I did go over this paperwork also, and I am looking at it, you know, everything is going up just a little bit. There's, there's something that's outrageous here. You know, something's going up one dollar, something's going up six dollars, but it's in keeping within the cost of what it's costing us to do it. Because we can't, as you said, we can't subsidize it. So if that's what it costs to do it, then that's what it costs to do it. So I don't see anything that's outrageous on here as far as the going up. So I just want to say that part.
Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. If public comment has anything to say about this, permitting please.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. When was the last time this was increased?
Twenty twenty-three.
It's supposed to be annually?
Yeah.
So wouldn't it be simpler than to, six percent is twice your COLA. I mean, wouldn't it be simpler just to every year adjust the COLA? I mean, we have to increase our costs because of overhead costs. How many jobs have we added to see? Because our, our budget is burdened by adding additional jobs, and so now we bring stuff in-house, but our, our stuff still goes up. We have a planner now. It's in-house. That should help lower costs, not keep adding the cost. I just, I don't understand the six percent. I guess it's three percent a year, but I mean, wouldn't it be simpler just to go with the COLA? That way it could just goes with the economy? Honestly, we're out looking for developers and businesses here. Maybe another nail-needles coffin. Everything goes up. They don't want to come and do business here. I mean, seventy-five dollars to somebody that's building multiple homes or trying to get a subdivision or trap in place like the gentleman at River Lux. That's money out of their pocket that they gotta spend. They really should think twice about doing business in Needles, so just be cautious. Don't price yourself out of business. It's already on the verge right now, so be cautious. Thank you.
No further comment. Public comment will be closed. Let's move to adopt the Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Needles, California, establishing a revised schedule of certain fees and charges for city services.
Madam Mayor, I mean, I think it's important for the sake of this council to understand how we got to that six percent. That is a CPI increase over the time of period of time that from the last time we did adopt it. So we are, as Mr. Goodman Center, former councilmember Goodmanson did recommend, we are doing that. It's just a period of time since we last adopted. And so this will happen annually, so you'll see this next time this year. And so we'll, we are mirroring what the CPI increase was. It was just over two periods of time, not, not one period of time. So, so that's a great recommendation.
Thank you.
I move to approve.
A second?
A second.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
NPUA Council Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor or any member of the NPUA City Council, they pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to NPUA council action, a member of the public may address the NPUA City Council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. Three-minute time limit per person does apply. Recommended action, approve items three through four on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. This is to be acted on.
Mayor, I'd like to approve.
Patrick, will you go over threes?
Yes, except twenty, the twenty twenty-five reservoir inspection reports for the east and west tanks located on San Clemente and Ferry Drive and high tank located on Parkway. on San Clemente and Ferry Drive and high tank located on Parkway. And so every five to six years, in this case, we did it in two thousand seventeen, we did an inspection of our tanks. There is a, a company that we partnered up, partnered up with Liquid Vision Technology, which completed this cleaning and inspection. Uh, fortunately, the surface rust grades were minimal and increased by eight, uh, from a grade eight to a grade nine, which is less than point three percent surface rust. And then during the inspection, two repairs were noted to be completed. The repairs noted are all three reservoirs need entry patch seals and the Parkway reservoir needs uh, le- a level target cable staff for the process and coating. The repairs is needed. We believe it's about twenty-five hundred dollars worth of improvements that are needed. We're very happy with the report. Uh, for those that haven't seen it, it is online, but it's a full uh, a scuba diver got in that tank and went around and the tank and took pictures and um, it's, we're, we're really happy with the report and the findings that came out.
Call for the motion.
Make a motion to approve three and four.
There is a second.
Are we, and we're doing both of them then?
Yes.
Providing them both. Okay. Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Jernigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is the end of our NPUA consent calendar. Council consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor or any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items five through nine on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
I'd like to pull item eight. I'd like to call your attention to page eight. The diversification, there's, uh, a little inconsistency in the first paragraph. Top of the page.
How many pages is in there? I'm sorry. It's item eight.
Page eight, item, agenda item eight, page eight. Or maybe it's six. I'm sorry. The, the little box is covering up the page numbers. Up on the very top for diversification, uh, diversification that, uh, except for LAIF and US Treasury securities, no more than twenty percent. In parentheses, thirty percent of the city. So I mean, there's a typo there that.
Okay. Thank you.
Intended to be twenty.
It was intended to be twenty. Real quick, as since we pulled it, we're talking about it. Let's pass these down one at a time. So it's two pages together. So you can pass them down this. As one, so we, we did what, there was a question that was asked of, of how is this being invested? Cause the local agency funds needs to be, uh, broken down. And I think it's important since you pulled it to, to have this discussion. The city of Needles, uh, does invest into a LEAF fund, which is a zero local agency investment fund, which is a relatively low risk, not going to say zero percent risk, but it's a low risk, modest, um, investment that basically allows for a four point four eight percent return at this point in time. And so the, what you're seeing here, no, we don't have one point six, six point seven billion dollars. But what we do have is that we are part of a larger pool of these investments that are made into the, the, that we make into this fund. And so treasuries, uh, corporate bonds, commercial paper, time deposits, certificates of deposits and other agencies. And so this is an example of how, uh, we take the city, um, the funds, the, the, the fee, the financial, uh, excess funds that we're able to and make money off of our money. So we make about four point four eight percent and we're going to finance, uh, now that, uh, so Jill has recommended that we take any excess funds and we put it into our LEAF account to be able to make money on our money. So that we've got, uh, additional revenues or especially with the four point forty percent return that we currently have. So that's something that we haven't been doing in the past. And so I appreciate her expertise to be able to guide us in the right direction. And, uh, we thank her for pointing that out. So what in front of you, our new investment policy will, will allow us to be able to make those adjustments and, and, uh, allow us to, to make those safe investments, um, for city of Needles so that we can have additional funds and, and put it towards the residents of our community.
Any further questions? If not, um, we'll make, um, the motion to, um, uh, uh, approve items five through nine on the consent calendar.
I'm going to approve.
I'm sorry. Um, this is my recommendation for record purposes. This is that item was cool.
Uh huh.
Um, I believe it is proper to, uh, spring items five, you're not with. And they didn't have the asset.
Okay. I'll move to approve items five, six, seven and nine.
And call for the vote.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then call.
I have some questions. What were we doing before this? Where was it? The city in a banking house or?
Correct.
So now we're just taking that same money and just putting it into the state.
Believe you can, yes, sir.
And, and a clarification during each one?
Yes.
For clarification, most of the funds were in a bank account. There were some CDs only earning about point three six percent that we've redeemed or cashed in early in July. So you'll see those come off of the, uh, treasury report and we'll send them up to LEAF. Now, city, the city was already investing in LEAF, but there was no active investment manager, um, doing it. So I recommend because of the safety and also the liquidity, same day you can call LEAF by ten AM and the funds will be back into your bank account by three PM, which is great for a small city. So if we have, we need funds, we can get it same day. So the liquidity and the return and the fact that that's the state of California's investment pool. They allow local governments to join in. So, um, it's a great deal for us. They have big investment managers and doing everything stay safe and compliant with state law. So it's really a no brainer for a city like, um, Needles.
Yeah. Just what kind of fees do they assess?
None.
That's even better.
It's even better. Yes.
And, and the last time we adopted this policy was in two thousand. We're in the process of bringing this forward.
Yeah, it'll come annually from now on when the, um, annual investment, um, authority is delegated to your city treasurer. It's required under state law that it come annually to you. So this is a regular report, regular report that you'll see in June or July of each year adopting this policy. And then we'll have the treasury reports come to you monthly in a public setting for transparency purposes. And to demonstrate that we filed it with council within the required forty-five days and you accepted it within the forty-five days. So we're just trying to be a little bit more transparent and a little bit more, um, financially, um, responsible with the stewardship of public funds here in Needles.
How much do you think we're saying this would make? But add, by, by joining this group?
Well, we're already a member of it. We already have LEAF accounts. And in fact, next month, you'll see, um, an item coming to council to open up a LEAF account for the housing authority. So we're already in there. We only have, um, a few hundred thousand dollars there. But we do have some of our bank accounts that have quite a bit of money. And given the liquidity, I'd like to send most of it up, keep what we need for the next, you know, two weeks worth of warrants and things that come up. And then just call, pull it down or call and send it up as we can.
But how much do you feel like this would help, this is going to add into our, as a net?
Well.
So four point four eight percent of a couple hundred thousand, three hundred thousand.
Yeah, I, I would say we're going to send up several million, several million. So four point four eight percent of several million. Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's the smart thing to do with the surplus funds that aren't needed, you know, in the immediate.
Day to day.
Yeah, day to day. And, um,
Can I join?
I wish, I wish I could join too.
From what I understand, it's, uh, almost bulletproof.
Yes, yes. Very, very low risk. They're, they're investing in the highest grade investments. If it's corporate bonds, it's, you know, double A or better. Um, same with the commercial paper, although the rating scale is a little different. And of course, you know, US treasuries, um, and treasury notes and T bills are, you know, have the full faith and and backing of the US federal government. So. And all the time deposits and certificate or, uh, certificates of deposit, those are all required under state law to be collateralized by the bank that's, uh, issuing them at a hundred and ten percent. So it's, it's practically bulletproof and backed by the state of California. So unless the state of California goes under, we're going to get our money back no matter what.
Can you see? Move please.
Jill Tara, interim finance director.
Thank you. Um, we'll have a motion to, um, approve item number eight. I'll move to approve all five of them.
Okay.
And call for the vote.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is the end of the consent, council consent calendar. Write our council items. Approve the position reclassification of the current human resources specialist to a human resources analyst. Effective July first, twenty twenty-five, si- um, city manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, remember the council in front of you, we have a, uh, proposition or a recommendation to not create a new physician, but reclassify, uh, is ensure that it corrects a title classification for an existing employee who's already, already performing these higher level duties. We're not expanding our government. We're aligning job responsibilities with the appropriate professional designation. And so in front of you, uh, what, well, this matters because the employee is currently functioning as a the, the sole city's HR professional and is required to fully understand the whole burden of handling recruitment and benefits and payroll and legal compliance and labor relations and employee issues. And these duties go far beyond a, um, uh, HR specialist position, which is more of an administrative position. And so, uh, this HR analyst position reclassification, um, can, uh, ensure that we don't have any HR compliance errors that can expose the city to costly lawsuits and fines. Additionally, misclassifying the roles of lower tier position increases the institutional liability that we might have. And so it was important to point out that as, as the council had wanted, the individual that's listed, um, the reclassify, reclassification requires a certification to go with the position. And so we, uh, we've added those credentials that a certification be involved in that. And then a five-year, uh, professional HR experience be included. Um, so, uh, thank you all for, for taking the time to, uh, you know, work with us through this process and ensure that we, uh, move forward. Um, so we have a this replaces an outdated specialist position. The city has grown. We are a bigger city. We've gone from four million dollars, twelve million dollars. That becomes, that comes with bigger, bigger problems, uh, across the board. And so again, we need somebody that understands and reflects the level of work being performed. And so with that, staff recommends approval of the reclassification for this position, meaning back to July first, twenty twenty-five from a reclassification of human resource specialist to a human resource analyst.
For comments, questions? If not, we'll open up to, uh, public comments. Any comments from the public? If not, public comments are closed. Um, we'll call for the motion to approve the position, the reclassification of the current human resources specialist to a human resources analysis effective July first.
I'll move to approve ten.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Wait for full reading on adopt ordinance six seven five dash AC, adding chapter eleven A. Camping to the Needles Municipal Code, establishing regulations prohibiting camping on public property. First read introduction. City manager report.
Yes, the purpose of this ordinance is to modernize and enforce regulations of unauthorized camping. As you recall, in March, you had requested staff to come forward with a solution of the reoccurring encampments that are occurring at the El Garcis or other public spaces. And so with the grant passed, there's two, two, um, legislation framework or legal ring framework that has occurred in twenty twenty-four. One was a grant pass decision, which basically was a Supreme Court rulings that cities are no longer constitutionally required to provide shelter before enforcing anti-camping laws. And then there was an executive order that came placed by the governor that does not reinstate the shelter requirement, but urges agency to offer connections and services that were feasible. And so in front of you, we have an ordinance that aligns with our current federal and state policies. Enables enforcement with clear definition procedures and legal safeguards, protects public asset access to safety and sanitation of park sidewalks and business corridors and empowers the city manager to ensure permits and impound stored property is needed. And so these provisions that are in front of you prohibits unauthorized camping, storage and the use of camp paraphernalia on public or private property without consent or city authorization. Um, code enforcement officer, uh, Bernie Hatz is here, uh, if you have any questions. But our recommendation tonight, again, this is just the first reading of this, but the Needles Municipal Co- Municipal Code, um, by adopting ordinance six seventy-five for a city, uh, to lawfully regulate camping in public spaces and safeguard community welfare.
This is my counsel.
Maybe you recognize, I'm sure, um, did you want to talk about the edits that we prepared?
Yeah. So in, uh, I made some edits, uh, pre, prior to the meeting that basically, uh, the police chief is actually referenced in the ordinance as, as you are all aware, there is no police chief. And so our recommendation is to strike in the areas that police chief is, uh, identified and replace it with city manager. Uh, again, uh, I work closely with the sheriff's department, but this would be a city ordinance that we would work closely with the sheriff's department. But one of the examples is, is impounding stored personal property. So eleven eight point five, the police chief or designated is authorized to impound the stored personal property. So it's going to reread, the city manager is authorized to impound the stored personal property. So I'll work with code enforcement. We will find a location to be able to store this lawfully. Cause there is a ninety day requirement for us to store the property that, that we do come into, um, that does come into our hands. Now, it's important to point out, we're not going to run around town trying to displace individuals. That's not the goal. It's in the event where there are unhoused individuals that are creating some sort of public nuisance, defecating in our parks. I think that's what led to this in the first place, is that we had individuals that were running around defecating in our El Garcis. And so we're recommending that this be approved. Again, it's the first reading and that the city manager is this, is the individual instead of the police chief, which we do not have as part of the ordinance. So that is, that is the replacement that's going to take place. But with that, we recommend, uh, proven to the first, uh, approval of this ordinance for the first reading. Again, Bernie or myself or the, and the city attorney who drafted it are all available for any questions that you might have. I thank our city attorney for putting this together and, uh, Bernie for, uh, enforcing it. And we're all working together as a city to help provide resources to individuals and get them the, the resources that they need. Some of these help, we were very good at reaching out, touching base and ensuring that we get them to go or provide them with the resources that, that they need, whether that's connecting them with Angelica or sending them to West Care on the other side of the river. Uh, we work closely and we thank Bullhead for having a shelter as well. We work closely with your team to be able to house individuals. And we also have folks here locally. We've got firehouse ministries. We've got set free. We've got individuals that we work, that we partner up with to help provide resources to folks that are unhoused. And we find ways to, um, you know, find them, uh, a, a good foot forward and get them on their way. Or housing or any kind of resources that they need.
Any comments by council?
The shepherds. So you said that you, that we work closely with all these people. What does that look like? So if you were to walk up on someone camping at the El Garcis, what is that conversation or how does that take place? Do you provide them with resources then? Um, or a way to do, get those resources?
Yeah. So Bernie Hatz, our code enforcement officer is the individual that works closely with the sheriff's department. I mean, this is I'm saying it's happening on a daily basis.
Right.
But there, but it is, it is a. But there, but it is, it is occurring. So Bernie, would you please?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, our counsel. When we're addressing the individuals, we're seeing a lot more of the first timers here. And we'll ask them where they're coming from, where they need to go. Do they have means to get there? I've worked with Angelica from housing. We have lists of people that we make phone calls to, to get them taken care of. That elderly gentleman that ended up here and we found him sleeping in the dirt and it turned out because he had to come here for his social security or, and we got him medical attention. We were able to get him pointed in the right direction through a, a couple of the churches. And we were able to get him over so that he can get his ID and his, his card. And then subsequently was able to make it back home. We had a gentleman this morning, we found sleeping in the bushes. Unfortunately, he, you know, we had to call the ambulance. We almost lost him. Okay, so this helps us in means to, with our contacts. If the council would like, I can get copies of those. We have, there's a whole battery of contacts that we try to move forward. Unfortunately, there are individuals that are residentially unencumbered that don't want the help. They want to be left alone. So we try to deal with them the best that we can. We offer them resources. We can't force them to take.
And, and again, for instance, there was a circumstance that after one of our council meetings, there's an individual that was doing some illicit act in the back of our El Garcis. And I was able to call the sheriff and they come and they were able to, you know, properly process individuals. So it's not, you know, again, it's a case by case basis and we're very conscious about how we handle and deal with it, with the utmost professionalism that we can show because, you know, that could be your brother, your uncle, your aunt, I mean, anybody. Anybody can face being unhoused. I mean, it's, it's just reality. So we treat everybody with the respect.
So just to, from my understanding, when this situation happens, your, our code enforcement is the first point of contact?
Well, it's the sheriff's department.
Okay, or the sheriff's department, either one. So then, and the difference between what you just talked about and what we are talking about is it's not illegal to be homeless.
Correct.
And it is illegal to be doing illegal things, which, because I was there that night. So when you're doing something that's illegal, then the sheriff's department steps in for that. I'm just going to throw this, it was my experience a couple of years ago where this was happening down at the park, where I watched the person being told to leave and then the sheriff took their belongings and threw it in the dumpster. I was so upset and I got in a fight with the sheriff. And I don't want to be fighting with sheriffs, but so you're going to take their things and impound them, which means not like their car getting impounded, we have to pay to get it back. Who's going to store it for them while you sort it out and give it back to them?
For ninety days.
For ninety days.
And so in the event where there was, there was an experience where an individual got, you know, was nowhere to be found. We, we took, it looked abandoned. We took the, we took the property, displaced it. And then the individual came back and said, where's my stuff? So we went in the trash can ourselves and went and got it. So we want to avoid those kinds of situations. And so, because we have done that, if we had to. Yeah, so we will find a location that will be able to store for ninety days and after and we'll, we'll catalog it and chain of custody and all that. We'll move forward. Again, those are state laws that we have to follow, but even if we wanted to take that part out, we could not because that's the state requirement of a ninety day chain of custody impoundment.
Yeah, last week, there was a woman on Third Street that had two shopping carts full of stuff and she had had to go to the hospital and she was told, well, you're just going to have to get rid of your stuff. And a nice police officer got her two baskets from someone's front yard. And so she was going down Third Street with two shopping carts, trying to walk up the hill to the hospital. It's just really, it's hard in our heat right now. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of people here in the heat. They tend to avoid us, but, and it is dangerous when they are found like that and need medical attention. So I, I absolutely do not want to see people camping out in El Garcis, in, in the front lawn of the train station. There, we have a whole city where people can camp out. That's just not the place. And, and, and tapping into our electricity so they can run microwaves and cook teriyaki chicken on our light pole, because that happened one night too. And, and I have personally cleaned up the castings of people in the back of the building. So it's, you know, this is, you know, this is our, our crown jewel of the Harvey houses and a place that's very nice and beautiful. And it's, it's, it's hard when people don't have a place to live, but we do have places. And do we still do any kind of, does, does our Saint Vincent de Paul, do we have a mechanism for vouchers to put them up overnight somewhere or is that gone from our city?
So the Red Cross will step in in the events where the, the Red Cross does assist. Again, we give multiple, there's multiple nonprofits in town, and so I can't speak for them.
Right.
Most of the, in most cases that I've seen, they do extend a helping hand to individuals to either get them back on their feet or house them for a couple of days or whatever it is.
Thank you, thank you.
If it's not illegal to be homeless, why, why are we making it illegal to camp?
Because most of the time it's, it's trespass issue and it's not just the camping. It's the urinating, it's the the feces that go along with it, it's the trash, so unsanitary conditions.
Okay, this is mainly an El Garcis issue?
No.
Okay, like I want to say, you know, why don't we move on to somebody else? We don't want them in El Garcis. If they move somewhere else, it'd be on, on city property anyway.
Well, that's, that's why we try to point them in the right direction and get them the help that they need.
Okay. You said if they don't want help.
Well, that's, that's unfortunate.
Then what do we do? We arrest them?
They can be cited under this municipal code.
They still stay there if they're cited.
They can be, I believe they can be eighty seven or they can be restricted from the property.
Ressess.
Yes.
Any public comment? If none, public comment will be closed. Motion for to waive the full reading and adopt ordinance six seven five dash AC adding chapter eleven A camping to the Needles Municipal Code. Establishing regulations prohibiting camping on public property.
Make the motion to approve ordinance six seven five AC.
Second.
Over here.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
No.
Thank you.
City attorney report?
Yes, so today we collected on a civil judgment regarding one nine three two Rio Vista. We have negotiated resolution of abatement at fifteen ten Washington with your code enforcement and city managers. Excuse me, completed the anti camping ordinance. We have been assisting with multiple canvas regulatory and enforcement matters. We're working on an ADA matter that the housing authority continue to be engaged in code enforcement and receiver shifts. Worked on employment and labor matters, assisting with labor negotiations, litigation and insurance defense council, the monitors and such council, reviewing and editing contracts, reviewing and advising regarding ordinances and proposed policies, assisting the clerk with public records matters and advising on brand.
Thank you. City clerk report?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I am continuing my education. I have two webinars that I will be participating in in August. These are trainings that will help me be the best city clerk that I can be. I'm going to keep doing as many as I can and doing as many as I can online so that I'm still here. I am continuing to convert everything to electronic as I go through the vault and go through our files, trying to get electronic copies of all of our documents. Also putting the older minutes and agendas onto the website through agenda management so that we're going back as we were before agenda management. Working on municode, continuing to update and codify ordinances that are not in there. I just did two more, found two more that I added to the code. Working with the city attorney on records requests, complaints and legal actions as they come in. We have a couple records requests that were pretty significant that we were working on. Continue to clerk the housing and planning commissions and the community events calendar is online. So if you have any events, please send them to me and then I will get them on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager report?
Kansas your vote.
Oh, yes. Nope, sorry, wrong one. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I got it open.
Thank you. All right, real quick, Arrowhead Credit Union continues to demonstrate its commitment to the city of Needles. You know, we talked about it last night, but I want to make sure we, we really highlight that this weekend, there's a youth financial literacy, literacy event taking place right across the street here at the rec program next slide. Actually, it's, I'm just kidding. It's just my next slide. So the so the literacy game again come out for all those that are interested, Saturday, July twelfth, ten to twelve. It is reserved up, so we're really excited about that. So come out and get to learn about financial literacy. They'd love to see the council there. So if you guys have nothing better to do or you've got an afternoon open, please come out and hang out. Twelve to eighteen year olds are going to learn about the importance of losing their vehicle and what that means to get a flat tire and how, you know, you only get half of your paycheck when, when, every week. And so there's just, it's a fun game that they're coming together to, to, you know, help our residents, kids and, and parents will learn as well. So you might take something or we might take something away from that. I'll, I'll be there volunteering and assisting. Next slide. I want to congratulate our team for putting together the Fourth of July pool party event. There were a hundred and thirty three attendees, raised a hundred, five hundred and fifty dollars for donations and concessions. Very family oriented event. So really excited about that. So on the far right, you're going to see Jennifer Valenzuela, Mary Jernigan, and then that's the representative who come, who came out from Assembly Member Gonzalez's office. So really excited about that. We're, we're front and center with our state legislatures that are thinking about us. So it's really neat to be able to see that, that they wanted to come spend the, the day in Needles and hang out with us and enjoy our pool party. Next slide. So right now Tri-State is providing a hundred free pool passes. So all you have to do is go down to Tri-State and your kids get in free to the pool. It's about, there's a hundred degree pool passes. Only fifteen have been used. So if you know any kids, please tell everyone, send them down there. They've got two hundred and seventy five to go. And so it's important, you can't use these ones. That's why I said not a pass. You can't print this out. But if you go down to Tri-State, they'll just give your child a pass. So it's a great opportunity. We appreciate their contribution to our community and wanting to participate and help our program. That's, that's three hundred dollars in revenue to our pool program. So let's utilize all of it so that our kids, kids in the community, our residents can, if you know anybody at the schools, let's, let's push this out to them as well. Next slide. And that's our junior lifeguard program. The next slide. Kids came out last week to be part of our junior lifeguard program and really assist at the pool. They shadowed lifeguards and it's really exciting to see this youth based project come to life. Basically, it's officially launched last in, in June. And so it's a local youth activated program to help water safety tips and, and whatnot and teach kids how to CPR and all that fun stuff. So if you've got somebody that wants to come out and participate, please have them come out, get with Jennifer. We can get them organized. Next slide. Want to thank the sheriff's department for their five hundred dollar contribution to our summer day camp. Last week, they got with Jennifer Valenzuela here at the rec center and contributed to it. Just a reminder, those that are five to twelve years old can come to the Needles Rec Center, participate in our summer day camp at no cost. So again, that's another resource to our residents, children to be able to enhance their daily, their daily life and be part of a strong community partnership. Yeah, so thank you sheriff's department for your contribution to, to our Needles youth program. Next slide. I want to thank Mr. Yankee, Robert Yankee, he on the left hand side at Lynn's Garden over the weekend. Two things happened. One, he became an Eagle Scout. So we're really, actually three things happened. One, he built the bench. So we're really excited about that. I want to thank Mr. Yankee and Ms. Councilmember McCorkle for providing the tools to be able to help Mr. Yankee achieve his goals. So number two, he became an Eagle Scout as a result of this project. This was the last project that he had to do. And so really proud of this young man. And then three, he shipped off to the Navy this morning. I, I hear he barely, barely made his bus. So we're really excited about it and it made it off. And so for those of you that aren't aware, this Peggy Sue, who's a member of our community, part of the women's club, this is her child. And so we're just so happy to see, it's so hard to become an Eagle Scout. Knowing myself that I never achieved that goal unfortunately, but he did. And so we're proud of him, really excited, but it is a heck of a lot of work. But the most important piece is if you go to Lynn's Garden, you're going to see that bench on the left hand side that he built himself. So kids and, and, and folks can sit down and ponder and think about the world in Lynn's Garden now with that new bench that he provided. So thank you, Robert Yankee, for your contribution to our community. Next slide. We did have some unification efforts take place for the, thank you. There you are. Thank you, Jared, your recognition of, of that effort. We're so proud. And I thank the city council's leadership for moving forward with the purchase of this equipment. And yes, it is fire abatement and so it is legal. But we, because we want to prevent fires, we don't want what to happen in Malibu to happen in Needles. But again, this is our crew getting our beaches ready for one of the busiest days of the year, July fourth. So we will have this for every holiday here on out to be able to get this cleared out and assist with the fire abatement that takes place in our community. But as Mr. Johnson pointed out, it can happen in so many different ways across the community. Next slide. This is another example of the, the fire abatement that took place along the Colorado River. So really excited about that. Next slide. Again, the new features that are at the splash pad, if you haven't gone, go check it out. It's a lot of fun. You don't even need to take one of your nieces and nephews. Just go have fun and watch members of the community, really enjoy it and cool down in this hot weather. You're going to see that mushroom on the left hand side. That's a new feature. And then the bucket on the right hand side or new features that were implemented. So thank you Kathy Roush and Rainy Torrance and, and, and our whole entire team for making this possible. So again, this is an example of the three point nine million dollar grant that took place in the residents of our community are going to benefit from this. Next slide. There was a storm that took place that had severe damage throughout the town. This is an example on the left hand side. I thought that was a transformer. It wasn't. It's actually piece of equipment that stores bases for the little league, but it, but still there was a sinkhole underneath it that was a result, result of the storm. On the right hand side, you're going to see the Lamar commercial sign that did take the dive. We are working with Lamar and to get that sign replaced. And so they are getting, getting it removed and, and replaced as soon as possible. So we think the code enforcement for your efforts. The sign's been removed, but it will be replaced pretty soon. So we're really excited about that. We thank our code enforcement team for coming together. Next slide. And again, this is another example. Our crews are working all day long on Thursday to be able to get ours. Not only did we have to get prepared for a holiday, a busy holiday, but we also had to get, make sure that we cleared it out for our residents. that we cleared it out for our residents of our community. Next slide. Uh, we did clear out the pool yard, so we are trying to utilize in maintenance the existing infrastructure that we do have here in the city of Needles as, uh, if, uh, Mr. Jared Johnson pointed out, it's really important that we, uh, we take care of the items that we do have. And so our crews came together and cleaned up, cleaned up all fifteen, uh, yards to ensure that we, you know, create unification for residents of our community. Cause we do have four thousand people that do come over that bridge every day that do look to the right and see our well yard. So it's an amenity piece, but at the same time, it keeps our equipment nice and clean. Next slide. And this is the new building that's, has arrived and is being built on California. This will, will be able to take all of our electrical, uh, out of city hall and all of our, uh, and put it into this building. So, and all of our trucks, uh, off of, uh, Brubafa and put them into, under sheltered areas. So really excited about that. So this is the building taking off. Or thank you Kathy Roush, uh, for moving this project forward and, and Rainy Torrance and the rest of our team for making this happen. Next slide. This is just the foundation and, uh, the frame starting to be built. If you go by, it's actually re- uh, erected. So you'll see a, uh, my manager report this week, you'll see an update. This is as of my last manager's report. Next slide. And there, as the chamber did point it out, there is a ribbon cutting for smash burger coming up. So please come on, uh, come on out Friday, August fifteenth to support our, um, business, our local business that is here in town. They are, it, it is really good. If you haven't stopped by there, their grilled cheese, uh, their grilled cheese burgers, really amazing. Uh, it's a lot, but it's, it's, it's a lot of food, but it's really, uh, really good. So anyways, on Friday, April, uh, our August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, from ten thirty to eleven thirty, there'll be a, um, smash burger, uh, ribbon cutting. So really excited about that. Next slide. If you don't utilize the resources, we lose it. And so I wanted to be, I wanted to let you all know that there is a on-the-go health clinic here in Needles that performs every, every Thursday, starting eight to four over on the east side shopping center. So please share this with all residents of the community. No insurance needed. Uh, you can do your annual adult screening, physicals, point of care screening, testing, uh, hemoglobin testing, diabetes testing, pregnancy testing, chronic disease management, dedication, refills. And so these are, these are, and then there's also urgent care services. Um, so if we don't utilize our resources, we're gonna lose them. And so we're so blessed that the county, uh, along with Senator Fadilla, made that investment in our communities. Every couple of weeks, you're gonna see me remind you of this, cause they're reminding me, so I'm making, I'm like, next slide. That's it. So thank you all for taking the time to listen to my manager.
Council member Ford?
Needles used to have fireworks at the rodeo grounds. Next year is gonna be two hundred and fifty years of the United States. I think we should have fireworks again for the Fourth of July next year, if it's possible.
Thank you.
Council member, um, McCorkle. Um, so I already gave you a list mixed up earlier, but I do want to thank Jared for speaking on what he did. Cause that brings me to, if we can get a quote on wood chipper since our conversation earlier, um, and then also if we can start getting a plan to get all of these types of slides and little advertisements that we have up on ten's local channel, um, to help get that out. Cause I think that would be beneficial to have people reminded about our bu- services, we can, our bus, medical, all of that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Vice Mayor Campbell?
Hi, thank you. Um, I want to show you that I had my grandchildren here for two weeks from Ohio. And we utilized everything. We went to the swimming pool. My girls, um, come, they swam on swim team for two weeks. They competed in the swimies. So I spent two weeks at the, um, at the pool. Um, the pool party on Fourth of July was really wonderful. Um, the splash pad was a lot of fun. Uh, but I was down at Bob Bell Beach and it was really, it made my heart so big to listen to the comments being made, to watch the people going down the ramp with, uh, pulling a wagon, pushing a baby carriage, one person with a walker that just wanted to go down and put their feet in the river and come back up. And these are all things that were just really a lot harder to do before we did this, because they had to go through that very hot sand. And some people can't walk through the sand at all. So watching all the commotion and the people utilizing our river. I got a few jabs on, why did you guys do this? Now everyone wants to come here. I said, well, that's why we did it. Sorry, we're not having exclusive beaches. But, uh, it was really, really nice to, to, to see that. And, uh, we should all be proud of, of that project, um, always. Um, I would like to again, like the way Tana, um, bit your leg about, um, grassy knolls. I'm gonna keep biting your leg about electric box paint projects and getting that done. And I'm not looking at professional painters coming in to do it. I'm looking at artists, local artists that are artists. We can look at their work. I don't want just paint thrown on it, but something nice. And coming, if we can get it done maybe before the centennial, we can utilize week sixty-six, maybe we can do a theme, we can talk about it. But I'd like to, we've been talking about it for four years and I'd like to do more than talk about it. Uh, I want to thank you for the California Bear Clean Up. I came back again by there today. And count trans have gone in and already started removing all the rocks that people had piled on top of the rocks, doing their little, like little artwork that you find in desert and trails and stuff, mo- moving rocks around. And, um, they do have a lookout point there and they are working on it. People stop there. I go by there five days a week. I go by there down to Golden Shores and, um, I watch the people stopping and taking a picture. And on the Arizona side, going to Arizona, taking a picture, I have probably have twenty-five pictures. I'll be taking pictures on those signs across the nation. It's something that people do. So, um, it, it's very, very nice. On the, um, electric yard, um, the people who live on California street, when that is all done, they're going to have an easement that they will be able to use to go to the back of their property. Because the residents are concerned and we make phone calls and I told them to call you.
As soon as next week, you, that's at the end of the project, next week.
Oh, next week. So, um, other than that, um, I think that's, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member Poe?
Okay, um, so one nice pleasant surprise about Robert Yankee. Um, his mom Peggy Sue and I, she was like my first friend that I made moving down here. He is a good kid, so I'm really, really happy and proud of him as well. Um, I'd like to make a note that the flag at the Santa Fe Park on J Street is getting pretty tattered. Should be replaced. And then, um, I learned a little something. I was back in Minnesota, Minnesota, for a little vacation. And I, um, went to a local live TV show and one of the guests on the TV show was a lawn goober. And he talked about when you should water, what you should lawn mowing and everything. He said the ultimate, the best time to water your lawn is one hour before sunrise. Especially here, because you don't want to water in the middle of the day. And, uh, so a public service announcement for citizens, the locals who still have lawns and, um, the county and then just set your clocks to five AM. And that'll save water and it'll be good watering for your yard. Maybe it didn't say how long to water, but Minnesota's a lot different than Needles, so it would be a lot longer here. But anyway, that's it. Thank you. Council member done. Nothing today. Thank you. Council member noted.
Uh, yeah, uh, the fireworks, uh, that will be great. I know they have one at the Obby. If we could have something even closer to that or even half of that, that would be great to have.
Yeah, it's two hundred and fifty years for the United States. That'd be great to have.
That'd be awesome.
And also the sixty-six thing would be.
And with Ellen, um, on the painting of the, uh, electrical box in here. If you go over to Laughlin, all their electrical boxes are painted and they're really neat. And yet, like she said, you don't have to get a professional. You can get the kids from the school, like they do with, uh, on the bridge, the, uh, the underpels. But you can have them paint the, the little electrical box. I'm sure they would love to do that. That would be, that would be a no cost. And another thing is this board up here for our votes. By the time it gets to me, I already know everybody's voting. I think, I think we should have it. I think that's, that should be a priority.
Okay.
To get that. So we, we push the button and we all vote independently, like we do anyway. But it's nice to know when, you know, we're voting our own conscience.
Fair enough.
That's all I got. Thanks.
Um, it, um, Assemblyman, um, Jeff Gonzalez, he did send Jose Esperanza out here and he did tour around Needles. It was really nice to, um, meet with him. And, um, I do want to thank the Needles Elks Lodge for sponsoring the Fourth of July at the rec center. It was a really great event. And it enabled our citizens just to come in and enjoy the, the day there at the pool, plus the sheriff's department. Um, Ellen and I on Monday attended the Cal Cities Riverside, um, for the desert rental amenities. Um, the sheriff's, Riverside Sheriff's Department was there and they spoke about sheriff's responsibility and, um, and spoke a little bit about, uh, working with ICE too. Um, and then their mayor, um, gave a, a quick synopsis of what's going on in their community. They have six thousand new homes coming up and just, um, like everybody else are trying to revitalize their downtown. Uh, just as we would like to. Um, if nothing else, um, the meeting's adjourned. See you in August.
You too.